Okay, I'd like to call the meeting into order and have the clerk lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody, welcome to the Thursday night edition of the Tuesday Board of Education meeting. Welcome all. If I could have a motion in a second at the agenda of March 16th, 2017, be approved as submitted.
So moved.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor? Thank you. We have a consent agenda that consists of the following items, minutes, recommendations from the committee on special education, recommendations from the committee on preschool special ed, recommendations from the superintendent for personnel changes, a request to approve the recommended bidder for magazine subscriptions through BOSI's cooperative bid for magazines, a request to approve the recommended bidders for National Art and Supplies, WB Mason, NESCO Specialty and Supplies, and approval of requests to dispose of unserviceable textbooks. If I could have a motion a second that the board approve the consent agenda.
So, second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Thank you. We have no special reports. Do we have any visitors wishing to speak tonight? And this is the time in which we do encourage board members to come and visit and participate in our agenda. Claire, we know you're on a tight schedule because you have to be back to the auditorium.
Yeah.
So please give us an update.
At Harris Hill, students finished the reading challenge, which encouraged students in the elementary school to read more. And Mr. Nelson had to dye his hair blue since the blue team had read the most reading minutes. The Hill brothers came to Harris Hill to sing about the importance of reading, and students had fun listening and dancing to the music. At Cobble's, Mac Bennett, a Rochester American hockey player, visited the students in kindergarten and third grade. And at Indian Landing, students wore crazy hats for their student council spirit day. At Scribner, third graders designed a kindness quilt and decorated it with messages that will last a lifetime. And Scribner has now began to hold breakfast with the principal raffles, to which kind and positive students who win the raffle get to eat donuts Friday morning with Mr. Herschler. At Bay Trail, the drama club students performed in Bay Trail's musical Into the Woods Junior this past weekend. And Bay Trail also hosted their annual March Madness, where students and staff shot hoops to see who could get the best out of 10. Channel 3's Glenn Johnson visited Bay Trail to inform sixth graders about meteorology. At Penfield High School, the class of 2019 held their semi-formal, their sophomore semi-formal, and there was a great positive student response to the dance. Marihuana students participated in their last conference this year, and DECA and student and Science Olympia teams participated in state competitions, with two DECA students placing top 10 in their events, and the Science Olympia team taking home six medals, two of which were first place. The Penfield Dance Team ranked eighth place in the jazz category at a national dance competition in Florida. In music, students from the high school, middle school, and elementary schools were selected and participated in all county festivals, and Penfield students performed in the Men's Night Out Concert in the Penfield Auditorium. And also, next week is the Penfield High School Musical, where students will perform the Musical Wizard of Oz.
Wow. And you had a couple days off this week, so you probably spent that studying, right, for about 12 hours each day, right?
I actually had a bio test today, so I just studied for that on Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday.
Right.
Yeah.
Good for you. That's great, especially saying that in front of Mr. Pfeiffer over here. He likes to hear that.
Are you in, are you in the show?
Yeah, I play in the pit orchestra.
Yep, and that's where she's headed off to next, because they're rehearsing for the fabulous event. Any questions for Claire tonight? All right, well, thanks again for your report.
Thank you so much.
Look forward to seeing you in the pit when we come to watch the Wizard of Oz.
Yep.
Next Friday and Saturday, correct?
It is next week.
Thursday through Saturday.
Saturday, correct. Okay.
Thank you.
Give you a little plug for that, right?
Right, please go, because unfortunately, because of the snow, because of the weather, they lost some days of ticket sales. And they also lost four days of practice, so they're cramming in as much as they can.
Thank you.
Take care. Thanks.
So we, our superintendent, Dr. Putnam, is under the weather. Like, that's probably not a good thing to say. We're all under the weather the last, last week, but he is not here tonight, and sitting in is our deputy superintendent, Dr. Sanzuzi.
Thank you. So tonight, we have student and staff honors, a brief, Mr. Huffman is here to give us a brief capital project update. And tonight, we'll be going through the BOSI's budget proposal. Jim, do you want me to hand this down? I'm going to ask Mr. Pfeiffer to go through student and staff honors. Also, as part of that report, we have a, a report that I think was going to be given by Dr. Putnam and by Mr. Ellis around the lobby trip. If you could pitch in on that, that would be great. So, Mr. Pfeiffer?
All right, thank you, Dr. Sanzuzi. You can see I'm joining the Reader's Glasses Club here. Things are getting smaller and blurrier as time goes on, so.
Welcome.
Our first recognition is the, the winter scholar athletic teams. To qualify for this award, our teams have to have 75% of their participants earning an average of 90% or higher. And the following teams have earned that distinction: our bowling team, boys' basketball team, boys' swim team, cheer team, girls' basketball team, the ice hockey team, boys' and girls' indoor track, the wrestling team, and the Nordic ski team. Congratulations to our scholar athletes in those teams. Keep up the great work. Next up, we have the Science Olympiad. Bay Trail's three Science Olympiad teams had a great performance at the Midwest Regional Tournament, finishing third, seventh, and twelfth. The third-place finish qualifies Team Eight to attend the New York State Science Olympiad Tournament in April. A total of 29 students out of Bay Trail's 45 competitors earned medals. Congratulations to all of those Bay Trail Science Olympians. And we have the Odyssey of the Mind. A Cobble's team and three Bay Trail teams represented Penfield at the Odyssey of the Mind Tournament. The teams placed fourth, fifth, fifth, and 11th in their divisions. Approximately 120 teams from throughout the area participated in the competition. And again, congratulations to our Odyssey of the Mind teams from Penfield. Another athletic honor for our hockey team. Congratulations to PHS Ice Hockey goalie Lindsay Browning, who was named the Section Five Player of the Year and the top scholar athlete in Penfield's addition, division. An outstanding honor. Congratulations to Lindsay. And a wrestling honor. Congratulations to PHS Junior Frankie Gissendanner on winning his third consecutive New York State Wrestling Championship. This is the first time we have had a Penfield wrestler that has achieved a three-peat. Outstanding honors. The Rotary Oratorical Competition. Congratulations to PHS Juniors Emma Hart and Rachel Stein for placing in the top five in the Western New York Regional Round of the Rotary Oratorical Competition. Emma came in first place, and Rachel came in fourth place. Outstanding honor, and we appreciate their efforts in that regard, representing Penfield well. And a basketball fundraiser at Indian Landing. They raised $1,225 for Galisano Children's Hospital at the annual red versus white basketball game. I heard a lot of fun was had by all. I also know that our, one of our new principals is quite the prankster. You know, one of our things is always, we never want to see anybody get injured at these events. But apparently, there were a couple jam fingers due to, you know, some aggressive play. And Mrs. Ware came in the next morning wearing a fake cast to tease the employee who had bumped her finger during that time, and it went over quite well, I'd say, here. So, a lot of fun even after the game. And then we have our advocacy trip.
This, the week before last, we went, actually, it was last week, we went to Albany with the remain, with the rest of the Monroe County School Board Association. Dr. Putnam and myself attended for Penfield, and we had an opportunity to speak to our representatives to talk about the, talk about our issues. So I was able to meet with Rich Funky, Mark Johns, Joe Morelli, and then Brian Koby. And all of them really were very gracious in taking the time out, and they were all working on their one-house resolution. So it was a very busy time for them, and they all took time to meet with us and explain what was going on, and listen to what we had to say as well. The, the main issues we had were regarding foundation aid and the removal of the foundation aid formula. And all of them really expressed support for retaining the foundation aid formula. The tax cap, which we were talking about changing the formula for tax, for the tax cap. And, you know, there is some possibility to adjust the formula to take into account pilot and maybe BOSI's. The remainder of the tax cap formula will probably stay the same. And the, there was, there was pretty good agreement that the governor's proposal for modification to the STAR, basically the additional requirements for STAR reimbursement, be removed. So they're all very, very similar to the needs we want. I think they recognize the needs and how that impacts us. And we had some other talks about how things impact us. This was prior to all these things coming out, and over the past week, they have come out. Both houses, houses have come up with their one-house resolution, and, and some of this manifests itself, but there's still some, some digging into that to go. But it was very productive, as usual, very well-run by the Monroe County School Board Association. And, and again, they take time out for us because they respect us, we're prepared, and it's a very, it's just a very meaningful time for both of us.
Thank you very much. Did anybody?
Well, and Mark's correct. This week, both the Assembly and Senate came out with their one-house bills. And the language that I like is that they rejected or denied the governor's proposal. So it's very strong language, and each of the houses also increased funding. So that's important. And tomorrow, you know, we're all, the School Board Association is part of the Monroe County Education Coalition, and tomorrow, we'll be trying to catch up on phone or in person with some legislators just to follow up. And that's our coalition of teachers, PTA, assistant superintendents for business, superintendents, and Board of Education members, so, as a follow-up. But I think it's great that you were able to go and, you know, with Dr. Putnam and bring those things to fruition.
And I would like to add one other thing. The other thing that Dr. Putnam and I self did is we delivered the letters, the advocacy letters from our community to our various representatives and to the governor's office, telling, basically reinforcing our support for foundation aid and the retention of the foundation aid formula. And so we had, I think there was 400 letters that we were delivering to the various representatives.
So the next few weeks, by April 1st, we'll.
We'll be very busy.
Very busy. We'll see a lot of maneuvering, so.
I do think it's important that, you know, the, the STAR, the change that the governor proposed in STAR was to, as you know, as the board knows, is to freeze the amount of STAR reimbursement that an individual would receive from the state at the previous year's level. So right now, STAR increases with the tax rate and with the budget increases, although the governor was successful in capping those increases at 2%. And, you know, that really effectively, that cap really already effectively increases the burden to, primarily to the same, people who have senior STAR, but also to, in some cases, to folks who have just regular STAR. So, and a freeze would just exacerbate that. So I understand why the governor would be interested in it. It, you know, helps control the state's cost, but it is their obligation. So, you know, their, their changes to STAR last year rolled out so poorly that I think they may have learned their lesson for a little while.
Hopefully so.
All right. Thank you very, thank you. I very much appreciate that help. Thanks. And thank you, Mr. Pfeiffer. We have with us today Gary Huffman from Campus Construction. We have a brief capital project update. There's, as you know, we have a number of construction projects ongoing, and then we are in the planning process for the, for the elementary additions pro, project. So we don't have a lot to bring you tonight, but there's some sort of consequential movement, and there's some visible things that are going to be happening in the community just in the next few days. So we want to make sure the board's aware, and we just want to bring everybody at home up to speed on where we're at. So Gary, would you take off, and if you don't mind, I'll pitch in if I see a chance?
Absolutely. Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. Mr. Pfeiffer? Our current projects are done, and so we have assessed where we are budget-wise, and we do have some unencumbered available funds from the overall project itself as a result of work being done. One thing coming out of it, though, as Alan McNiff has requested, we keep open the electrical contract, as he has some electrical needs throughout the district that we could facilitate by keeping that contract open for a period of time. Otherwise than that, we're closing down the rest of the project contracts.
And that's for which?
That is for the, the electrical contract would be from the security project, and it's where most of our funds are available that we have. So the general trades contract and the HVAC contracts and plumbing contracts will be closed. And then that opens up some opportunities for Alan. And Alan has expressed interest in taking some of those unencumbered security funds, security project funds, and addressing some issues within the district, and that is to take care of some window treatments, doing some door replacements. As I alluded to last time, I think I was here, we did do a significant amount of hardware replacement throughout the district to enable the enhancements for the security project. But as a result, the new hardware didn't necessarily align cosmetically well with the old doors they were being assigned to. So we're going to fall back and look at those doors and relook at that and see if we can replace some doors in the district to make it look better, to dress it up. And it won't change the security component of it, but it will help the aesthetics of the doors themselves. And then the other item would be signage. There is, Alan has done a phenomenal job in the district upgrading the signing, signage within the district, but there continues to be more needs. And so he's requested and expressed some interest in taking some of the available funds and working to, I won't say complete, but to continue his efforts on the signage in the district. And he's approached SED. They've given their nod. They've consented. So we're going to be looking and exploring opportunities there as well.
Gary, you, I would just follow up. The window blinds, you, the board on your board tours has seen the blinds that we've installed. So, you know, there's, there's, those blinds are a legitimate security item, obviously, because they prevent, as you know, they're sort of a one-way, they, they, they do a good job in, in maintaining the temperature in the spaces. So there's some spaces at Bay Trail where we're particularly arrested, where it gets hot because of the southern exposure. But also, many of the elementary schools, the blinds are in original equipment to the buildings. They're in terrible shape. So we see it as a chance to upgrade the blinds, provide additional security, and, and, you know, certainly it fits within the scope of that security project. I think all three of those items, if we'd have had, you know, if we, you'll get a budget update when we bring the changes to you. We're still working through what the scope of this looks like. But, but I think, you know, certainly if we'd have known that the bids were going to be as aggressive as they were, we'd have included this upfront. We didn't. So it'll be a new, sort of like a new mini-project within this existing project. It'll need to be bid. It'll, SED will approve it as it, it's within the scope, so there's no issues about that. But we need to go through the, through the SED process to ensure that they approve of what we're doing and all that. So we'll be doing that over the course of the next several months, and you'll be seeing, you know, some more, there'll be future conversations at board meetings about this as we move forward.
And we would anticipate that work to bid and be completed within this calendar year. That is our plan, so.
A quick question. When you're talking about the signage.
Yes.
The wayfinding, is this to find the exits, or is this other kind, does this mean something else?
I think it's all, all of the above. I think he's looking at, at all the signage. Where, and as I say, it's been a project in progress with Alan and his department. So I think he's looking at all those needs and how best we can address it with the funds we have.
Thanks.
Sure. And I don't mean to jump around, but I'm going to go back to the playground project now. So the, this year, we're doing, what we, we, we have adopted the, the phrase of playground project because that's a big emphasis of what we're doing. One of the things that we're going to begin next week is tackling the woods at Bay Trail. So the surveyors were here last week. They've already staked out, put their surveyor marks and flags and all that. And to delineate the, the field work that's going to be accomplished, the ropes course contractor was here over the weekend, believe it or not. Came from New Hampshire. The nearest hotel he could get was Geneva, and he came and dismantled the old ropes course in the woods of Bay Trail. Crazy as that may sound, but he did. So that opened the door for the tree people to come next week. They will start clearing the woods that, that, there's a portion of it, we're not doing the whole woods, but a portion of the woods for the future field, and that's going to be occurring, hopefully with the weather cooperating. It will be next week. That's what we're, right now, currently scheduled to do. So, and then we're going to be working through the course of the spring on clearing the ground and building the new playgrounds over there. So that's going to be coming soon. The playgrounds themselves, though, we won't even touch until after school's out. That doesn't happen until after school's out, so I want to emphasize that.
And I would, I'm sorry, could I just?
No, go ahead.
So, and today, we have, as the board knows, we have an ongoing District Safety Committee that looks at safety throughout the schools, and really a pretty broad, a pretty broad charge. Many of you have sat on it in the past, and Ms. Nazar is our current board member. But one of the things we talked about today was safety during those elementary playground projects, and also during the Bay, Bay Trail project. Because as part of the scope of that, part of the scope of that work will be a lot of grading work to create the rectangular field right behind Scribner. And then, so the movement of some of that dirt over to the other end of Bay Trail for, to be used in the construction of that field. Sort of leveling, changing the grade of both parts of the site. So too high at one end, too low at the other turns out just right. But along with that comes machinery, equipment, and so on. And so there is a plan in place for fencing, for security fencing, to prevent people from entering and traveling through the, the woods area, the, to keep, try and keep kids out of there during the time that that's under construction. That fence will cover the, will go sort of completely between the play area, because the work will be going on in, while school is in session at Bay Trail and Scribner. But it'll cover the, the complete side of the wooded area, and then we'll also block off the little entryway at the far end. So hopefully, that'll discourage people from going through. So we've addressed that, and we've had lots of conversation about how we deal with safety during the summer, because as we know, those playgrounds are pretty heavily used. But, you know, that'll be, I think, an ongoing project with lots of conversation between the building principals, the district, campus, the contractor. I think it'll be helped by the fact that one of the first things, of course, that happens is the old equipment goes away. So there's not much for you to play on, but there's lots of stuff to play around, right? And we'll be doing work, and so it's sort of an attractive nuisance, I think. But I think we're aware of it. We're working towards it, and certainly, we're having lots of conversation about it. But I think the, the part we wanted to make sure the board was aware of is, on our website, as you know, has been the, the map, and we've had lots of conversations about the relatively small portion of woods that we need to take down to accommodate that field. But I'm sure everybody's forgotten about it by now, and, and the minute that it starts to happen, you know, I expect we'll all hear from somebody who can't imagine what we're doing. So I wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
And we've been and continue to have constant conversations, especially with Scott Herschler, and to a lesser degree with Wynton, only because we haven't really affected Wynton yet, but we are impacting Scott and letting him know daily what's going on and the progress of the contractors and what our plans are coming up, so he can communicate that to parents and staff, so.
And Mr. Herschler has done a great job in getting that information out to parents.
He really has, yep.
So they're, they should be well-aware, but, you know, we all forgot what happened last week, so.
So, as I say, the ropes course, along with that, early last week, we took delivery of the ropes course poles. There's a stack of about 12 out back here by the tennis courts, and there's another eight over at Scribner off, off the parking lot in the grass. In anticipation, the contractor to install the new ropes course, his work will start in April. He's looking to be here about the third week of April, so, and he'll be here about a month. So towards the end of April, you're going to start to see poles and ropes and cables and all that going up in the, what we call the, the grassy knoll just past the tennis court area. So we'll be seeing that soon. We've spoken about ropes, site work. Okay, elementary additions. Sorry, this was supposed to be a brief report. Sorry, I'm covering a lot of ground here. So elementary additions, that conversation is, is right now at a point where we're doing some investigatory work. Myself and Alan met with the DEC last week, and we're taking a proactive look at the transportation facility, recognizing that when we just did this little emergency project, when we dug up a portion of the, a small portion of the existing bus garage to put a, a sediment separator in, we found some contaminated soil. So understanding and recognizing we may have some issues there, we brought the DEC in and had a conversation with them and met with them, and our testing agency, we did an RFP for testing to map out and create a logic as to how to investigate subsoil conditions there. So we, they were very, very happy. The DEC was, no one ever does this. No one ever calls us ahead of time. They always call us when there's a problem. So to, to, to be planning ahead, they were impressed with that, and they were pleased with the district, that the district was taking that action. So we have mapped out some logic as, a logic that meets the DEC's requirements to look, we're going to drill holes, basically. We're going to drill holes in the ground and look and see what we got, and then try and delineate what we have. And that work will start next week. We're working around the transportation maintenance staff, and we recognize that they have DOT inspections, so we will not be working when DOT is working. And we have a draft traffic study. We did the RFP in December. FSRF, who did the traffic study for the light project, did this, through the RFP process, won that bid as well. And they did a terrific job. They are ahead of schedule. They produced a draft study to us. We, they came last Friday to our OESM and reviewed that with us. So, and, and that looked positive, optimistic for the district as well. And that was, traffic study was for the proposed B&amp;G facility on Atlantic Avenue.
And I, I think, well, you'll see, well, once we get a little further in that process and we've vetted that, that study, be happy to send copy to the board. You'll certainly see it as part of the information you need to make decisions as we go forward in this. But in summary, it really doesn't say anything I don't think we could have guessed, which is that adding about 20, you know, staff members to Atlantic Avenue doesn't make a significant impact, particularly since our peak times, one of the things they looked at was the times that we would be using it. So when do, when does our staff come and go versus, I think everyone's concern is the traffic at the intersection of Atlantic and Five Mile Line Road. And, you know, that intersection certainly is impacted by us, but we're hours away from the peak time at that. We just, you know, we just, our schedule's different. We don't fit in. So, so really, at the time that, that we would be, what we would be adding to it is a negligible impact off of the peak. There, they also looked at sight lines for the exist, for where the driveway would impact and made some suggestions as to signage, because it's kind of hilly through there. I think it's a well-done report. It's very professional. They made some good recommendations, I think, that go beyond just our impact as to, you know, some changes that could maybe be made at that, at that intersection to improve the flow of traffic with regard to timing of lights and stuff like that, so. So, I think it's, you know, it's, I think what we would've expected, but certainly it's a good professional look, and I think the board will find it useful.
Okay.
I believe that's it.
Any questions for Gary or Barb?
I have two. Number one, in the big windstorm that affected a lot of Penfield, and six of your seven school board members were without power. I won't name the one who did have power, but anyway. Was there any tree damage in the part of the woods that were taken down? Of course not, okay.
I actually, I will say, though, that one, I probably shouldn't say this, because I'm almost assured to get it wrong, but I believe that the tree that came down at Harris Hill is, was one that was scheduled to come down for work there, so.
Oh, okay.
So.
All right.
That's a.
Thank you.
I don't know.
It works for me.
I guess, yeah, I don't know if that's a good thing or not, but it's a thing.
Okay, I'll take it. My second question, the traffic study, I know, was just directly for our buildings and grounds area, but have you heard, or has anybody heard about, because Lisa and I just said this, is there, with Windsor Ridge opening shortly, any changes at that specific four corners?
Not that I've heard of. As you know, there, not, I am not aware of any specific plans for change.
Because I don't see any, yeah.
Right. Windsor, we do know, and I'm not sure if we've said this at a previous meeting or not, but the Windsor, the first phase of Windsor Ridge of about 15 homes has sold all but a few of those available lots. So, I think the way that works is they'll then move on to the second phase, they just sell one phase, as soon as it's sold out, they start a new one. So, you know, I think we can start, we can plan on starting to see the impact of that in the near future.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, board members? Gary, I was just curious, what's the depth of the drilling?
Oh, eight to 12 feet, if necessary, deeper, if they, we don't project going any deeper than 20 feet, and we know that there's a dolomite shelf in this area, so it's going to be as far, if we hit the dolomite shelf before that, that's where we stop. And then we're going to put in one or two monitoring wells as well, just in anticipation, knowing that that dolomite shelf is down there, that the groundwater may be laying on that stone, so the DEC wanted us to put a couple of monitoring wells in, just to test the water quality as well.
Well, as a matter of fact, we're going to go outside the building, there's an underground storage tank behind the bus maintenance facility that's proximal to the property line, so we're going to be putting two boards on the closest side to the property line at that point. So, nice, yes, for God's sake. Thank you, appreciate you coming out tonight for our Thursday edition.
Sure.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Yes, exactly, exactly. And, you know, I just, I would just follow up on, I just want to clarify one thing, because we did just go through an emergency project around the oil separator in the bus garage, and if you'll recall, we've allocated some additional.
But as a part of that emergency project, we did some work inside the bus garage. You'll recall, we, in addition to the oil separator, we did some heater replacement in there, just to try and keep that building operating, a few heating replacements and so on. One of the things that we did as part of that was, because of the, we need, because of the growth in facilities, we needed to convert a, the wash bay, what was an existing wash bay into a flat work bay, just so somebody would have a space to work in. And when they cut into the floor for a floor drain, the soil that they found in the bus garage, inside the bus garage, but underneath it, was, had oil, was, seemed contaminated. So we immediately notified the DEC, they told us how to address the small amount of soil that we found, we fixed it, we could've walked away at that point, but we told them that we were planning this project, planning a potential project at that site, and so when we invited them back to tell us how to explore this, that's when they told us this never happens. So, you know, because we had, we're out of the woods, we're clean and green on the thing, on the problem that we had, I think many times, people just choose to turn a blind eye and walk away, but for two reasons, we know we'll be dealing with it in the future, and also I think it's the right thing to do, so we thought it's best to sort of get a scope and outline of what that potential contamination might be. We don't know if it's a lot or a little, but this is a way for us to find out. So, thank you. And I do have a, my next presentation is the BOSI's budget, but before I move on to that, I do have a chance to follow up on a little bit of what the board has mentioned, I think, around snow days, and what Gary mentioned around the times we were closed. I'd just like to thank publicly very much, really, everyone in the district, but particularly Alan McNiff and the Buildings and Grounds Department, who did a fabulous job of keeping the buildings clean and safe and warm, and dealing with emergency generators and the wind, the problems caused by wind. We had some flashing torn loose on buildings, we had punctured roofs. Alan had his crew on the roof shoveling snow away from piled up air handlers. So they did a lot, and it's sort of unheralded and unseen, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you. So, he's not here to hear it, but I'll make sure.
We all, the board appreciates that, and I was gonna mention that, so I won't mention that under my report, but we know there's a significant amount of work that was done, so please pass on the board's appreciation as well.
I'll do so. All right, with that, it's BOSI's, time for the BOSI's budget. Tonight's presentation's relatively short, but I wouldn't want to give short shrift to this portion, because it does provide a significant amount of support, and we'll see this as we move through the components of it, to all of our district's operations. So, certainly the administrative functions, the planning functions, the instructional portion of the budget, transportation, really, BOSI's is entwined throughout our operation, and it really supports all the components of academic achievement and excellence. Certainly, BOSI's is all about partnerships. The fundamental purpose and reason for being of BOSI's is for schools to pool their resources to be able to provide services that would be too expensive, or too difficult, or, or too, or that they would not have enough students for, if they were to try and do them on their own. So, it's about partnerships across the community, and certainly about fiscal responsibility. The state of New York is interested in promoting the idea of BOSI's, of cooperation, and you hear the governor, you know, one of his common mantras is that districts and municipalities need to cooperate and do more together. Certainly, BOSI's is a fine example of that, so of fiscal responsibility as well. This is, as you know, our tradition, I guess, is that we color in our calendars yellow as we complete items moving throughout the budget calendar. So we've been at this since October, and we've achieved quite a lot. We began by establishing the budget calendar in the first meeting in October, and as of the last meeting, we've completed a review of the administrative portion of the budget, the program, the special areas portion of the program budget capital. We've had a board work session, and at the last meeting, we reviewed the general instructional component. Tonight is BOSI's. With that, we'll have the majority of the budget put together, so we still need to have a conversation about benefits, and take a look at the other side of the budget, revenue and fund balance, that'll happen at the next meeting. And we need then to approve and adopt a budget by April 11th, and we know our schedule for public hearings and for the vote. This is where we're at as of today. So, the increases that we've seen so far have not been dramatic. This budget has not been about significant changes from one component to another, and I think you'll see tonight that the BOSI's budget, that as you can see here comprises 11% of our overall program, isn't changing much at all either. In fact, it's a $10 million budget, it's changing by $134,000 overall. There's lots of changes within that budget, particularly in areas that affect students. So one of the major components of that budget has to do with the programs for students with disabilities, and there's always lots of shifts there. Kids come in and out of programs, new services are required through the IEP process, and services are dropped. So that's a very dynamic portion of that budget. We've added some new services that I'll talk about, we've dropped a few others, but overall, by the time all of those moving, many moving parts are put to bed, we're 1.3% budget to budget, again, about $134,000 increase. The, I mentioned before that the, that the BOSI's budget touches just about everything, and you have a very, you have a detailed piece of that, you have a detailed display of that at your, at your seats, but I just wanted to spend a minute and give a few examples, just to remind everyone at home what, what this covers. So, regular instruction, BOSI's has a role to play there, career and technical education, I think this is one of the, one of the areas that people, in addition to special education, that's a traditional role for BOSI's, a very traditional role, where one of, you know, BOSI's original reasons for being was to provide sort of vocational or technology-based instruction, in those days, vocational instruction, to students when districts simply couldn't support those kinds of programs on their own, the kinds of machinery that's necessary in order to offer a program, just a single district couldn't support, but districts could band together and do. That spread, some years ago, we transferred driver education to BOSI's, it's now offered through there. They provide us with textbook coordination for our non-public schools. So, all public schools in New York are obligated to share textbooks, to loan textbooks to non-public schools, BOSI's helps us coordinate that. As you know, they provide a significant support to us in computer services, there are, we buy our internet through BOSI's, we buy our phone service, or they provide us support for our student and financial software, emergency contact system, most of the big systems that we purchase come through BOSI's, for multitude of reasons. A significant reason is that we get BOSI's aid, the, things that we purchase through BOSI's are aidable. The state's interested in incenting districts to participate and to share in this way, and so if you do it, they'll share in the cost. And also, for many of these, we need some support. We don't need support every day, we don't need support in a manner where we would have to hire someone and bring them on and have them, we couldn't, we couldn't. But we do need help on occasion, and so it's a perfect example for, for BOSI's. If we have questions about our financial software, if we need help at a particular time of year, they have a staff that stands ready to help us and help other districts. So, so that's an example under computer services. You're familiar with your policy manual service, we purchase through Erie BOSI's. We have legal services for, through BOSI's too, for, for workers' compensation and for superintendent's hearings. They bid for us, they provide us health and safety, and of course, special education, lots and lots of services for students with disabilities and the related services that those kids get. And transportation, as you know, we do most of our transportation ourselves, but some transportation we just can't, or it just isn't efficient for us to provide. We don't own wheelchair buses, so on those cases where we need wheelchair transportation, we contract with BOSI's to provide that. Here's a, here's a summary of the more detailed budget that you have, and you can see that there's changes throughout it, some things up, some things down, for the most part, the increases are very modest, modest. So, I, there, you had a summary in your packet of the, of the areas that increased either by dollar amount or by a percentage increase, sort of out of what you, the range of what you would expect, and really, in all cases, it has to do with either an additional service or a change in the type of the service that's being provided. BOSI's increases this year, based on service costs, were relatively modest. And this is the summary by function, so, of that budget. I mentioned that they provide lots of services, we talked about that, and they do, but you can see that of that $10 million budget, the lion's share of that, over $5 million worth is provided to, is for students with disabilities. The other relatively larger areas, although still modest, are finance, that's all the software and software support, administrative charges, that's our share of the BOSI's administration. So, obviously, they have costs of being in operation, and those costs are, the cost for BOSI superintendent, for BOSI's administrative costs, for BOSI's retirement charges. All of those, those charges are split up and are shared by the component districts based on our, our student population. So that's, you see, their share of that, regular school education, OCED, and transportation. The other areas, legal personnel, records retention, maintenance, and so on, relatively minor. Terms of new changes, or changes, or new, I mentioned we were adding some programs, really, the two significant areas of change are in software and data services. One of the areas of increase has to do with the purchase of software, Ed Turkowski coordinates this, and there's sort of a rhythm to it, it tends to pop up and down based on, on the renewals of the various software programs that we have. So this is a bit of an up here, so that increases. We're also purchasing, and I should also mention, we've had a previous conversation on IEP Direct, or we are switching to IEP Direct from Kinney, who is our current software, our current provider for management services for Medicaid billing. There's lots that goes on behind the scenes with Medicaid billing, I think we talked a little bit about this at a previous meeting, but we put, our, our IEP's management system is IEP Direct. They have a component that helps with Medicaid billing, we're gonna switch from our current provider to, to the IEP Direct component, because our staff is more familiar with it, it should reduce their burden, they understand, they interact with that already on a day-to-day basis, so we think that makes sense. We are subscribing, these are two relatively minor services, but they are new, so I wanted to point them out, a data privacy service. As you know, we have an obligation to ensure the safety and the security of any data that we collect that has to do with children. And as you know, a lot of that, those, these software programs have complicated agreements, and, and their very existence is sort of problematic in that, in that area. So, BOSI's has a service that will assist in monitoring those contracts, and in reviewing that soft, those pieces of software, to make sure that what we purchase and what we're doing complies with the law. So we're trying that out, we want to see how it goes, but we're gonna participate at least for next year to see if it is, is helpful. Mr. Turkowski's been quite a proponent of this, because right now, he's the person we lean on to make sure that that's, that what we're doing's appropriate, and he feels the need for a little bit of support in a complicated area. And cybersecurity service, again, it's a, it's a smaller service, I think about $3,000, but what they will provide us is some hardness and penetration testing, review of our systems to make sure that we're as secure as we can be from, from outside attack. So, Ed, again, is excited about that possibility. We've done, we believe we're, we're good, but I think you can never be too good in this day and age. So, and also in security services, the, the, BOSI's has bundled together a number of previously existing security components. existing security components, and will be participating in that as well. Those are relatively, all relatively minor changes, but changes nonetheless. The decrease in one-to-one transportations resulted in a more significant change. Most of our buses, as you know, most of our transportation is, you know, certainly more than one student. But there is an occasion where we end up with one student on a bus for either management reasons, or sometimes because of their schedule, or their location, or whoever, however it works, they just don't, can't fit in anywhere else. And in both of those cases, BOSI's has an additional charge because it's a driver and a bus and a attendant, and you can't share the cost elsewhere. So, they bill that separately and differently. We've decreased over the course of the last year pretty dramatically in that area. So, that's a savings that we see. So, that's the BOSI's budget in review. You have lots of detail, and I'd be happy to answer any specific questions. But I just wanted to put in context a little bit about where we're at. So, we've, with tonight, we've, we'll have completed BOSI's. I mentioned that the proposed budget, we'll be looking at the next, at the next meeting at sort of pulling this all together and deciding where we're at. But we won't really know where we're at because of, as of March 28th, it's not April 1st yet. And the state budget, I'm fairly confident, will not pass by March 27th, right? So, they have until, they have until the end of business, or near the end of business on, on March 30th to complete their work. And their tradition has been to take every minute of it. So, the, we'd expect the state budget to pass on April 1st, thereabouts. With that, state aid and how it impacts Penfield. So, certainly, we'll have a look. We'll summarize as best we can. We'll probably have, we will have a range of options as of March, the first March meeting, I'm sorry, the second March meeting. But we won't really know until we get to the April 11th meeting. So, we'll, we'll have that last chance to decide and look the budget over. But we do need to approve at that meeting. We'll also be voting on the BOSI's administrative budget and adopting a property tax report card. So, we're coming to the end. But now's the sort of, the state legislature is frantically working and we'll be, we do our local version of the same thing, so, bringing it all together. So, are there, and then, all that has to be done in time for the budget hearing on May 2nd and May 16th, of course, the budget vote and election. So, are there any questions?
Court members? Mark?
When you, with the decrease in the one-to-one transportation, was this due to a makeup of the students' transportation needs, or is this due to some sort of organizational changes we made?
No organizational changes on our part. You know, there's nothing, it has to do with the nature of the students', student needs, and locations, and so on. So, it's not a program in place to have reduced that. It was a happy coincidence.
So, there's something, it's a coincidence, but it's something that could increase back again another, another year as things come on?
It could. But for now, we're not forecasting it. One of the difficult parts about the BOSI's budget is we, I spend quite a lot of time with Mr. Hershler because we ask the question, you know, if we budget just what we know, what we have right now, we're probably sunk. And it's a difficult thing to forecast. So, I will have conversations with Mr. Hershler about the kids who are in program, what programs he anticipates they might be in if they're going to change next year. Are there any children in the pipeline that you're aware of that, you know, haven't even worked their way through the CSE process, but that perhaps the schools are aware of, they're beginning to have conversations? Are there students in non-public schools who are not doing well, and the parents are talking about bringing them back? There's lots and lots of moving parts. And unfortunately, as you know, many of those programs are consequential. They come with significant costs. So, we spend a lot of time on that. And transportation is really no different. It's many students and lots of moving parts. And it could go back up, but we, but our best projection for next year is that we'll not.
Thanks. Thank you.
Other questions, anybody? The BOSI's budget, I believe we have to vote on that on April 16th, don't we? Not April 11th?
Is it the 19th? I got the wrong, 18th? I apologize.
So, we'll have to have a special meeting.
We'll have to have a special meeting on the 18th, yeah. On that, so, I think that was just a mistake in the powerpoint. So, thank you for bringing that to my attention. Okay, great, Mark. Hard to believe it started in October. As far as the state budget, one thing that is fascinating that the government can do, last year they did this, they actually didn't approve it on April 1st, but they have the ability to stop time. And so, if the session starts on, you know, April 1st, it can continue when the session is basically understood to be ended on April 1st, even though it's the next day. So, they're the only ones I know that can stop time. Thank you.
See the power.
Yes, thank you. Okay, moving right along, we're on page three of the agenda. And I, you know, it's interesting how many times we heard the word "security" through all of our presentations tonight. So, I think it's critical when we talk about funding and we talk about security, but it's, it just crosses into everything we do today. And, you know, it is a sign of the times, but it's great to know that we're being very proactive in regard to that. And under Board Business, we have some change orders that reflect, again, security with some things, I'll just highlight these. We have one at Bay Trail with a modification to a security counter. The district office, an electronic lock set at the stair door. The high school, electronic hardware at the entrance. Harris Hill, again, scheduled hardware. And then Indian Landing, some doors for exterior into the classroom. So, these are security and electronic hardware enhancements. All these change orders totaled under $10,000 net. So, the above change orders have been reviewed and are supported by architect Vic Tomacelli, project manager Gary Huffman, clerk of the works Ella McNiff, and deputy superintendent for business and finance Dr. Mark Sansucci. If I could have a motion in a second that the change orders as described above be approved.
So moved.
Questions, comments? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, so, our next item on the agenda involves something that we have to do. And it's our financial items. So, it's our notice for annual meeting. So, I'm going to read through this for you. I know you're all interested in doing that. But for our public, it's very important for the budget vote and election on May 16th, as Dr. Sansucci mentioned. So, we are passing a resolution that calls for the annual hearing and vote of the district for the 2017-2018 school year. So, if I could have a motion a second to hold the annual hearing of the voters on May 2nd, and the vote on the budget, and other propositions on May 16th, 2017, and that notice of the same be given in accordance with the law.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Thank you. So, the notice of annual meeting, budget vote, and election is hereby given that a public hearing of the qualified voters of the Penfield Central School District will be held in the senior high school building in said district on Tuesday, May 2nd, at 7:00 PM, for the presentation of our budget. That the annual meeting vote and election of qualified voters of the Penfield Central School District of the town of Penfield, Monroe County, will be held in the senior high school in the district on Tuesday, May 16th, 2017, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM Eastern Daylight Time. At which time, the polls will be open by vote, by voting by machine or ballot upon the following items. Number one, to elect two members of the board for three-year terms commencing July 1st, 2017, and expiring on June 30th, 2020, to succeed Mrs. Lisa Benati-Chizzi and Mrs. Camille Ratan. Two, the adoption of the following propositions, and these are the propositions that will be on the ballot. Number one, proposition one, to adopt the annual budget for the fiscal year 2017-2018, and to authorize the requisite portion thereof to be raised by taxation on the taxable property of the district. Proposition two, resolve that the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District is authorized and directed to purchase four sixty-six passenger-type school buses and four twenty-eight passenger-type school buses, and to expend from the capital fund, therefore, a sum not exceeding $738,719, of which $360,000 of the cost to be appropriated and expended from the 2017-2018 general fund budget, and to appropriate and expend the balance not to exceed $378,719 from the 2011 school bus reserve fund established pursuant to the education law. Proposition three, on the ballot, will be resolved that the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District is hereby authorized to establish a capital reserve fund pursuant to Section 3651 of the education law. And this will be known as our 2017 school bus reserve fund, with the purpose of such fund being to finance the purchases of school buses, vehicles, and equipment, and costs incidental thereto. The ultimate amount of such fund to be $6 million plus earnings. The probable term for such fund to be ten years. And the sources from which the fund shall be obtained are an initial deposit of the outstanding balance of the 2011 school bus reserve fund, which is approximately $2,704,429 as of March 2nd, plus interest, and amounts from budgetary appropriations from time to time, and unappropriated fund balance made available by the Board of Education from time to time, and New York State aid received and made available by the Board of Education from time to time as permitted by law. A copy of the statement of the amount of money which will be required to fund the school district's budget for 2017-2018, exclusive of public monies, together with propositions to be voted upon, may be obtained by any resident of the district during our business hours, beginning Tuesday, April 25th, 2017, on the district's internet website, www.penfield.edu, during normal business hours, at any public library or free association library within our district, or at the school district administration building between the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday. This is located at 2590 Atlantic Avenue, Rochester, New York, the Penfield High School, 25 High School Drive, Penfield, Bay Trail Middle School, 1700 Scribner Road, Penfield, Cobble's Elementary School, 140 Gebhardt Road, Penfield, Harris Hill Elementary School, 2126 Penfield Road, Penfield, Indian Landing Elementary School, 702 Landing Road North, Rochester, and Scribner Road Elementary School, 1750 Scribner Road, Penfield. Petitions nominating candidates for the office of a member of the Board of Education have been available as of February 27th, 2017, and shall be filed with the district clerk at our office in the administration building no later than Monday, April 17th, 2017, between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Each petition shall be directed to the clerk of the district, and shall be signed by at least twenty-six voters of the district, and must state the name and residence of the candidate and the residence of each signer or signatory. Absentee ballots will be obtainable on March, on or after March 30th, 2017, between the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday, from the district clerk in person or by calling 249-5702. Completed applications must be received by the district clerk at least seven days before the election, if the ballot is to be mailed to the voter, or the day before the election, if the ballot is to be delivered personally to the voter. Absentee ballots must be received by the district clerk no later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday, May 16th. And that a list of persons whom absentee ballots are issued will be available for public inspection in the office of the district clerk on and after May 9th, 2017, between the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday, except for holidays, prior to the date set for the annual election. Any qualified voter present in the polling place may object to the voting of the ballot upon appropriate grounds for making his or her challenge, and the reasons, therefore, known to the inspector of the election before the close of the polls. Also, that the qualified voters of the school district shall be entitled to vote at set annual vote and election. And a qualified voter is one who is, one, a citizen of the United States of America, two, eighteen years of age or older, and three, a resident within the school district for a period of thirty days preceding the annual vote and election. The school district may require all persons offering to vote at the budget vote and election to provide one form of proof of residency pursuant to the education law. This form may include a driver's license, a non-driver identification card, a utility bill, or a voter registration card. Upon offer of proof of residency, the school district may also require all persons offering to vote to provide their signature, printed name, and address. That pursuant to a rule and board policy in accordance with the education law, any referenda or propositions to amend the budget otherwise to be submitted for voting at said election must have been filed with the Penfield Central District's Board of Education at the administration building on or before Friday, March 17th, at 5:00 PM. Must be typed or printed in English, must be directed to the clerk of the district, and signed by at least sixty-five voters of the district. However, the school board will not entertain any petition to place before the voters any proposition, the purpose of which is not within the powers of the voters to determine, or any proposition which fails to include a specific appropriation where the expenditures of monies is required by proposition. So, as we know, this is a individual voice vote, and Sharon will call the roll.
Mrs. Beviers?
Aye.
Mrs. Benati-Chizzi?
Aye.
Mr. Elish?
Aye.
Mrs. Nasro?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye. Thank you. We also have another item, a boundary line adjustment. Now, the owner of 18 St. Ebbes Drive in the Penfield School District has purchased an adjacent vacant parcel at 1651B Five Mile Line Road. This parcel has been subdivided from a larger parcel assigned to the Webster Central School District. The owner requests it be reassigned to the Penfield School District. Approval of this boundary modification will avoid creating a small landlocked parcel separated by the boundary line of the two school districts. The Board of Education of the Webster Central School District is in support of this transfer and voted to approve it at their March 3rd, 2017, meeting. The town of Penfield Planning Board had previously approved the boundary change at their January 12th, 2017, meeting. It is recommended that the Penfield Board of Education approve this boundary adjustment. Upon approval, the district will forward the resolution to the Monroe One BOSI's District Superintendent for approval and submittal to the State of New York Education Department. This does require a resolution. Whereas the town of Penfield has received an application for conveyance of the property totaling 0.191 acres in size located at 1651B Five Mile Line Road, currently in the Webster Central School District, to the property's owners at 18 St. Ebbes Drive, which is in the Penfield Central School District. And whereas the Webster Central School District and the Penfield Central School District mutually agree that it is the best and most efficient use of district resources, is to recommend that the 0.19 acre parcel located at 1651B Five Mile Line Road be incorporated into the Penfield Central School District at 18 St. Ebbes Drive. Therefore, it is resolved that the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District, that the Board of Education consents to the alteration of the school district's boundaries by transferring 0.19 acres of the following property described to the Penfield Central School District. And this is parcel one, as we heard, 1651B Five Mile Road. The owner is Melinda McLaren, and we have the tax ID number. The employees and officers of the Penfield Central School District are directed to take any and all steps necessary to complete the transfer in accordance with the provisions of the education law. If I could have a motion a second that this be approved?
So moved.
Okay. Before we vote, I just wanted you to give us a brief clarification. This is a first for me.
Yeah, thank you for giving me the opportunity to, I'm sorry. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to make that clarification because we get questions lots of times from parents who live just over the border. I live right next to Penfield, but I'm in just over the border. I live right next to Penfield, but I'm in Webster, and it would be great if I could go to Penfield and could you just switch me. And we say no. And -- but this is sort of a unique case. So that neighborhood was actually switched from Webster to Penfield many years ago, I think.
I don't think that house was part of that switch.
Wasn't part of it? The neighboring?
It was a neighboring street.
The neighboring street was, because it's sort of right at the very, sort of a dead end of that neighborhood. But what's happened here is the owner of St. Ebbes backs up to a large vacant parcel that's -- that has recently changed hands. It's just recently been purchased by Mrs. McLaren. The he -- the long history of it is there's a ditch, a boundary ditch, a drainage ditch, that sort of goes around the edge of the parcel. And the owner of St. Ebbes Drive has traditionally used, has always used, the little nine-tenths, .19 acre piece on his side of the ditch as sort of his backyard. It looks like his backyard. It acts like his backyard. You would think it was his backyard. It's not his property. And so when the owner, when it switched hands, he approached the new owner and said, "I'd, you know, I really want, I'd like, I'd like to own my backyard. I'm, you know, could I buy this?" And they came to an understanding to do so. The reason that we're -- that we're intere -- that both districts are interested in approving the -- in approving the boundary line change is that parcel is a tiny -- there's a map in your -- there should be a map in your packet, or there was, you received a map. The public can't see it. But it's a tiny triangular parcel attached to the back, away from the street of his home. So you couldn't build on it. It can never really be anything but his backyard. However, under the education law, if a boundary line splits a property, even if it's under two separate deeds, the owner has the right to choose their school district. So Webster would forever be in the position of maybe having a future owner of that parcel say, "We want to go to Webster." They would have that right, at which point the -- currently, it's a Penfield home. St. Ebbes Drive is in Penfield. But because of that little backyard area, Webster would face the chance of having to route a bus all the way down into Penfield up in, and that would be the only home in the whole neighborhood that was then entitled to Webster. They weren't interested in that. The owner would like to have it be contiguous as one -- as one school district. And certainly, we have no objection, so, because we pick up a couple hundred bucks' worth of assessed value for two tenths of an acre. So it's really, at this point, in everyone's best interest, and it is very much a unique circumstance. It's very much unlike just switching someone's house into Penfield. So it is a very unique set of circumstances.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. On the motion, those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. My arm was a little light there. There is an element, too. I was involved in one time when you mentioned it. I just brought it back. There's an element under the law of adverse possession. There was a case that if you do use a piece or a strip of land like that for 11 consecutive years, you have the ability to go to court and claim that. So it's fascinating that -- but this is done the right way. But I mean, if someone wanted to do it in an aggressive way, they could do it. So it's fascinating.
Yeah, I -- yes.
Okay. Little known fact. All right. Thank you for that, Mark. Policy review. Who's -- Carol, would you like to take the lead on that?
I'm the only one here from the policy committee.
Thus the lead.
All right. So we have two policies here for our first read. 1640 is the one for absentee ballot. 2130, student representative to the Board of Education. So for 1640 absentee ballot, there's a change in the wording, and I believe all the honor goes to Sharon, who went to workshop for a school board clerk. Am I correct? And, you know, fixed the wording for us. But really, the very important thing, I think, for us to note is usually when we have a list of absentee ballot, we post this, a district office on the doors. And we had, you know, an interesting discussion on how we are actually putting their names of people, their addresses, and, you know, and the safety behind it. So this list of absentee ballot will still be available. However, people will have to ask, you know, inside district office to see it. And also, it will be available on the day of the vote. Am I correct, Sharon? Yes. Okay. So really, this is it. You know, just the wording and the way the practice is for more safety and also for more of what is current in other school districts. Anything you'd like to add?
And it coincides with the law, too, with what we're supposed to do by law. So, most importantly.
Thank you, Sharon. So this is our first read. The second one is policy 2130, and it's for the student representative to the Board of Education. And this policy has not been updated for quite a while. And when we had the change this year, when Charlotte moved to Charlotte, and we needed to have another student, so we looked at the policy again and thought that this would be, it would be good to take a look at it and change a few things in it. And I do want to point out that not every school board has a student representative. And Penfield is, you know, a school board that has always valued this position. It's an extremely good position when it comes to leadership and teaching a lot to the students. So we're pretty happy to have our students here reporting on what's going on. So the most important changes that we have, you have, you have the whole policy and, you know, all the changes. But I want to point out that now the election is in May, because we wanted it to mirror a little bit the Board of Education election, rather than in June, when a lot of the students are mentally a little bit checked out, I want to say, or too busy with, you know, with their exams and stuff. So we were putting the election in May. We are also making a change that the election is done by the student council and not by the student body of the Penfield High School. So we want this member to be an active member of student council. And also, because logistically, it's always been problematic when, how to do the election, you know, by the student body. So this makes more sense there. In paragraph two, we also would like the students to report on building activities and share feedback from the K-12 student body, as opposed to before. It used to be only high school students, even though we've had student representatives who report about everything K-12. But we just wanted to make sure that the policy talked about this. And also, we talked about the importance of the position, that it's a two-way communication, and that this student representative must be a student in good standing. So a lot of cleaning up of the policy here. And, you know, we're hoping that it encourages, you know, students to, you know, want to be a student representative. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them if I can. Yes.
In the first paragraph, at the very end, the last sentence, I find it, was this new? If he or she is unable to attend a board meeting, the president of the student council? She'll serve as his first alternate?
No, this was not new, actually. This has always been there. Yeah, we've had many meetings where, you know, yes. And well, you know, to Dr. Putnam's credit, he took the policy to student council and, you know, made them aware of a lot of things.
Okay.
And reminded them of a lot of their responsibilities. So this is, this was a great learning experience for them, because they really did not know that there was a policy, is what I'm hearing, and, you know, all of this. So that will be new, because you are correct. We've always, you know, when the student representative wasn't able to attend, then it was okay. They're not here.
But it also puts the onus back on the student rep, that if they have something else, that they need to get a representative.
Correct.
I like that. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So you're, now it's being, the election is by the student council, and they've represented the student council?
Yes.
Is it, I'm not sure, is it clear that they have to be a member of the student council? I mean, they could be representative, like in a, essentially a non-member representative, for example. And I don't know what's, what you, what was intended or what's desired.
I will take that back.
Well, it says here, the sentence before mine was, throughout his or her term, he or she shall take majority of her classes at the high school and shall serve concurrently as a representative of the student council.
Yes. They definitely have to be a member of the student council if they are elected. I guess that may, when they're elected. If they're not an active member of the student council, that's okay. But they, once their term starts, they need to be, they need to be there. They need to be at every meeting of the student council. And that, I think, has always been that way.
Okay.
That they attend the student council meetings.
Okay.
Because they're supposed to be reporting on what's going on with the board.
Certainly.
It's also bringing us back news of what's going on, or any feedback or concerns from student council.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Okay. I think we all know, Charlotte brought this to a whole new level when she was here. So I think, you know, including a lot of that is really critical. But, you know, when Dr. Putnam and I were faced with Charlotte leaving, Carol jumped in and volunteered to draft some things for us. So I wanted the board to know that she did that, and we appreciate that effort. And I think this will just pull it all together. So, you know, we need logistical things, too. And it also gives some accountability to our high schools, high schoolers. So, thank you. I have some comments after the, under the new business. So I'll move on to new business. We have a nomination of a Penfield representative to the BOCES board. This year, there are three seats on the BOCES board to fill. They are currently held by representatives from the East Rochester Union Free School District, Honeyay Falls Lima Central School District, and the Penfield Central School District. Each candidate must be nominated by the component district whose representative is up for election. The nominee must be a resident of the district making the nomination. Mr. Frederick Shippey has served the Penfield Central School District, students and residents in this capacity. At the district's January 24th, 2017, board meeting, Mr. Shippey stated that his term expires this year and requested support for renomination to the BOCES board. Resolve that Mr. Frederick Shippey residing in the Penfield Central School District is hereby nominated as a candidate for membership on the Monroe 1 BOCES board for a term of office to begin July 1st, 2017, and end on June 30th, 2020. If I could have a motion in second to that effect.
So moved.
All those in favor? Thank you. So, under some additional new business, I just wanted to note that a friend to us, T. Andrew Brown, who's a Regent and Vice Chair of the Regents, was elected or will be confirmed to another five-year term. So, you know, we meet with he and Mr. Norwood, and really, we're fortunate that Rochester has two representatives on the Regents, and he's very open to a lot of what we talk about. The other thing I wanted to mention, too, at, you know, Mark ran our Monroe County School Boards Association Legislative Breakfast as co-chair, and as usual, you get some pictures. So this happened to be from Brian Kolbe, Minority Leader in the Assembly, who I've known for a number of years. He sent that along. But I have two pictures that I want to give to Mark in recognition of that, and that's a picture of the whole delegation with Mark and Lisa Ireland, the co-chair, suitable for framing at your home and office.
[laughing]
And a standalone picture of all the legislators. And this one, I'm not sure, but you can have it as well. But again, Mark did a great job. I wanted you to have those for you to frame and keep in recognition of your efforts to do. I'll give you the picture of myself and Brian Kolbe. I don't think you want that one.
[laughing]
Maybe it goes to Sharon again, like all the other ones, because I can't, I can't bring them home anymore. So, but thank you for your reference. I thought it'd be great and for your family to see that as well.
Well, thank you, John. It was a lot of fun. And this is really one of the best events for the Legislative Committee, the Monroe County School Board Association, because they all came in, they dedicate their whole morning to us, and really talk very candidly, and it's very cordial. So it really is a lot of fun to do.
Well, and hopefully, you'll gather some more pictures as time goes on, and your office will be decorated with them, because it's a, it's a great recognition of what we do, you know, as part-time school board professionals. The last item I want to mention, because tomorrow is St. Patrick's Day, as referenced by some of the green around the table. There was a bill introduced last week by a member of the Assembly, Pheffer Amato. And this was basically a bill that recognizes that 17th Day of March, commonly known as St. Patrick's Day, shall be a school holiday for all public schools.
[laughing]
So in the midst of our very difficult budget negotiations and everything else, someone with the last name Amato is sponsoring a bill to make St. Patrick's Day a holiday. And this has been referred to the Committee on Education, where I'm sure it will reside for a very long time.
[laughing]
So I just thought I'd end our meeting with that on the eve of St. Patrick's Day.
St. Patrick technically is Italian. He--
Was would be the word.
Or was. Well, no, you never know.
Yeah, right.
And maybe Mr. Amato is Irish on his mother's side.
I'm not sure if Pheffer is a, P-H-E-F-F-E-R is a male or female name. That's a new one for me. We have Pfeiffer, we have Piper, now we have Pheffer. So nonetheless, I thought on St. Patrick's Day Eve, it was very interesting that our legislators are always thinking of us in some form or another.
And this man is a legislator?
A member of the Assembly.
Or this person? Sorry.
Yes, a member of the Assembly.
Member of the Assembly.
So I have that here, if anyone wants the specifics. With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn at 8:29 PM.
So moved.
All those in favor? Adjourned.